Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting for Village Council for the Village of Yellow Springs. Today is Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. We're here for a work session focusing on TIF and CRA, and you'll find out about what that means later. Julie from Calderon.
You bet. Stokes.
I am here.
DeVore Leonard.
Here.
House.
I'm here.
Gustafson.
Here.
And we are expecting Council member Brown any moment. Also present is Solicitor Amy Blankenship, Finance Director Michelle Robinson, Planning and Economic Development Director Meg Leatherman, Project Lead Elise Giardulo, and we also have as our special guest Public Finance Attorney for Bricker Grayden Tyler Bridge. Did I say Village Manager Connie Burns? It was so special. Yes.
Come on, just give me.
Thank you.
Yep. So, as I said, was it just two days ago we were here before? I said that this was going to be an educational meeting, and at the time I referred to Amy Blankenship as our professor, but her colleague Tyler, is it?
Yeah.
That's here and said, so why don't I just hand the floor unless Council has some other precursor comments or staff? Why don't we just hand the floor over to you guys?
Sure. Yeah, thanks, Kevin. Happy to do it. All right, so it's no surprise to Council that there's been some discussion in recent months about the potential to use some certain economic development tools that are available to you under Ohio law. That is outside of my wheelhouse, but luckily there are people at the firm that that is all they do, one of them being Tyler Bridge. So Tyler's got a PowerPoint for you that I think is going to link to the screens, and he'll go through that with you. Feel free to ask questions, and then we can have some discussion. Kevin, at some point, we might want to consider, you know, when and if we get towards the end.
I'm trying to keep a straight face.
We'll deal with that when we come across that bridge, then.
Tell me when I should consider stepping down from the.
Okay. All right, we'll do. Tyler, if you want to go ahead and get started.
Well, it's great to be here with everybody. My name is Tyler Bridge. I'm an associate at F. Bricker Grayden. I work with Amy and so many other great people across the state, and specifically with respect to economic development programs like the ones we're going to discuss today, community reinvestment area and tax increment financing. I brought my hiking boots today because that's where I'm going after this, to John Bryan State Park. I love it over there. Just glad it's not so hot, and hopefully I'll go to Young's Jersey Dairy and a couple other things, too. So it's great to be with you.
Hitting all the high points.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but also emphasizing that we should finish at seven.
Yeah. I got the seven oh one appointment. I got ice cream and things, you know. So, but I hope that, you know, we can have a collaborative discussion about really, really two parts. One, what do these programs do? What are they? How do they function? And then part two, how do those things kind of apply to the Windsor proposal and the Unity Village project? So we kind of, we talked about that. Let's just, let's take a step back and just look at our roadmap. The Ohio Revised Code, it allows the village municipalities, like the village, to authorize certain types of economic development programs. And two of those are the Community Reinvestment Area Program and the Tax and Increment Financing Program. And I work with Amy, and we are, you know, representing the village in the capacity to talk about these programs. And so what are we trying to do and try to help you do is to learn about these programs and enable you, in so doing, to authorize and encourage equitable, impactful, and sustainable development. And I think a lot of times the misnomer is, well, we're just going to approve these incentives. Okay, well, that's part of it, but we know that Yellow Springs is a community of people that have values, that are important values to them, and so we want to help you figure out ways to engage in a symbiotic relationship with flowers and bees. To do just that is to find a way to maybe use some of these tools, but in a way that doesn't sacrifice your strategic priorities, in a way that does not sacrifice necessarily your values that are, that have put you up on Village Council and the people of the village. And so that's, I think that's the big thing we want to kind of emphasize as we kind of go through what these tools do. Community reinvestment area is a tax reduction tool to a degree. A CRA essentially will abate increased assessed value, and that value is then exempted from real property taxation. So what does a CRA not do? Anything that's in place before the authorization of a CRA exemption is not impacted. So it's a little bit different when we're talking about this, the Windsor project, for example, because it's, you know, part of it might have been demolished, or it's a little different, and we're talking about a remodel. So any kind of value that's in place, the land value, for example, the current owner is paying taxes on that amount. As of right now, anything that's in place right now, it's not going to be impacted. So what does a CRA do? It says if you build a new structure or if you remodel a structure, then that increased value, when the Green County Auditor comes in and revalues the property based on all of that development, the CRA will abate those real property taxes, but only for a certain amount of time. The maximum abatement is 15 years. We'll get to that. So what is, what do you have to do to authorize this, this type of abatement? You have to declare an area inside the village, or the whole village, could be the whole. A lot of times, I'll be honest, with smaller villages, we do see that they just, they use the entire boundary because they don't want to keep coming back and keep spending money on attorneys and other things like that. But what you'll do is, there will be a study done. The study just looks at the housing stock inside the village's boundaries, and it just looks for, are there structures of historical significance within that area? We need two structures. And has the construction of new housing or the remodeling of existing housing stock, has that been somehow discouraged? And those bars are not very high. It's not that we have to make a scientific determination and something like that. It's just we're looking for reasonably, we're looking for some reasonable nexus to these types of patterns. And then when that housing survey is done, the village can consider approving a CRA area over that area. So we talked about how CRA is, is an exemption tool. It reduces real property taxes, but there are some limits to that. So if you approve a CRA for commercial property in excess of 75%, then the school district is not, the school district has to approve that. If it's a residential project, the school district is not involved. So we're getting kind of in the weeds here, but I just want to, you know, those are the big highlights of the program. It's, it abates increased taxes. It doesn't impact previous taxes. It occurs in an area that you describe based on a housing study. And then there are constraints about what we can approve within that area because the school district has a say for commercial and industrial projects if you have an abatement in excess of 75%. There are different types of incentives. You kind of probably picked that up. Oh, is it residential or is it commercial? So there's different things we can offer up to a maximum period of 15 years. So I think what I want to emphasize is that, and this might be on the next slide, but the village doesn't have a CRA program authorized at this point. And so we're throwing a lot of these things at you. Well, you can do this, and you can do that, and but if you do this, and so you have this, you're in the catbird seat, which is pretty cool, because right now you get to determine, first step, we're okay with using the program, but we want to, we want to look at our strategic priorities, our values, and we want to incorporate those things into how this program runs. So we want to offer a residential remodel because that's important to us. Maybe you don't want to offer residential remodel. You can pick and choose. Maybe you do want to offer residential new construction for single-family homes. Maybe you don't. Those things are able to be done. We can craft the CRA program uniquely to your needs, to your desire, priorities, because the code allows us to do that. We just have discretion, Village Council has discretion, to choose what the program parameters are.
Tyler, if you don't mind, I really started hearing myself all of a sudden. Under the column for requirements, all of those levers are each and every one of those at our discretion? We could swing them in terms of the number of units, the actual cost, and all that? Everything's flexible, I presume?
They are under, under the parameters. So the Revised Code kind of sets the maximums, and then you can come in and tinker with anything under that. So, for example, we can offer a new construction or a new remodel abatement for 100 years at, for 100% at 15 years, but we can't offer it for 16.
Right.
So you could, you could say, no, we want to do 10. We just want to, we want to do 10 because that's where we are. Other communities, what I've seen, some, some communities have a point system where they say if you do A and B and C, then you get four points. If you do A, B, C, D, and E, then you get five points, and the abatement is tiered based upon what you do. And we're going to talk about some other things that you might look at, but generally that's a great point. The Revised Code sets forth certain maximums and minimums that you can't tinker with, but within that, those, those parameters, we can.
And Tyler, follow-up question. These, this menu of options, you have to establish this on the front end, or you can do it on the back end, or?
Great question. So both. You will, the procedure is, there will be a housing survey, as we talked about, and then the next piece after that is Village Council considers a piece of legislation called a CRA establishing ordinance, and that ordinance kind of just creates the program. So you could try to, you know, holistically create your program at that point, or you could say, we want to do these parts now and then see how it goes, and five years later, you can come and amend that piece of legislation to do something different, include something new, take away something you didn't want, things like that. So it, that also is in your court, too, to decide how you want to do it. I would say if you have certain priorities on the front end, you know that, and you've looked at that with village staff, then it, you know, it wouldn't be bad to just do instead of coming back continuously and tinkering with it. Columbus had that experience where they started off with a couple things, and they've just continually amended the ordinance. I think that can, can create uncertainty in the community about what does it mean? Oh, they changed it, they've changed it five times. You know, you have to kind of have to weigh those pros and cons, but.
Yep. Thanks.
No problem. And there's different ways to use the tools, you know, and we're going to get into one where we, we're really looking at, okay, we have a project, and, and, and these folks have come, and they've said, we would like to have this incentive. But there's other uses of it, too. What I think what we're trying to say is, this is not just for Windsor, right? This is, this is, this is a village-wide tool that hopefully, if done correctly, and in mutualism, that word, you know, a symbiotic relationship where we're all benefiting, it helps more than just the Windsor project. But there's two things at play here. There's, there's, you know, how do we react appropriately to the development that we have in front of us, but then also we're being proactive because there will be more. You might have a single-family home developer on the outskirts of town at some point. How do you interact with them? Do you want to? So that's at play as well. I made this map, pretty proud of it. It's not 100% accurate because data is only as good as what we have, but based off of the Ohio Department of Development, we just wanted to show you what communities across Ohio are using the program. So this is not that the village is alone in, in using this. It's not that Green County, you know, is alone, or Clark County. It's, it's not, you'll see the, the yellows are where the program's used the most, and the oranges, the light purples are where it's not used as much. So we're not using it as much here in our area, but the program is being used, and you're not alone in this kind of discussion. How does this tie into where we are, what we're thinking about? Like I said, you really are in control. I can spit all these things at you. We can go up to 15 years, 100% and remodel and new construction, all that, but you get to pick and choose what you want within the boundaries. And one of those things, you know, when you, when you offer some sort of program like this, you can try to get something back that aligns with your priorities. And one of those things that we wanted to just highlight is, is some sort of affordable housing metric. You could, in your CRA ordinance, simply require a certain amount of percentage of units in multifamily, have to be at a certain level of area median income, and if you do that and you agree to that in an agreement with us, then we will be willing to offer A, B, or C abatement. So you can write those things in to the program. And this is actually a real one, and this is from the city of Columbus. It's a public document where they said for a certain, one of those categories, you know how we broke them up into residential, commercial, new, remodel, for this category, we just want you to have a certain amount of affordable housing, and you're going to agree to do that when we approve the abatement. So this is a live version of that, and so you're not the only ones thinking about those type of things also. I just go ahead.
Tyler, another question. Can a municipality have multiple CRAs?
You can. You can have multiple. My hometown, Hamilton, Ohio, and Butler County has two, one covering the downtown urban core and one covering everything else. So it's definitely possible to do. You could have different parameters for each CRA area. What I, what I don't prefer, and I just will be honest, I do not think it's a good idea to have a different CRA area for every different project, because then you just, it seems like you're only doing this for one entity, first of all, not thinking holistically about the entire community, but you have, it's going to be higher transaction costs to do that. I think it could also lead to confusion, like we talked about, with not just the community members, but also the business and community. We want to make sure we're sending the correct market signals out. We want you to be here, but here's the things you need to do. I think having that clear is helpful.
Good. Great. Thank you.
And I did have a picture of an anemone with Mimo, because we're, once again, we're just talking about how we align development with this place and our community, and that's kind of what we're doing. Any other questions on CRA before we move on? There's a lot more to CRA. We can get, and we will get deeper into the weeds, but tax increment financing is, is the second program we wanted to discuss with you, and it's different because it's not a reduction tool. It's a diversion tool. And that's important because essentially, we talked a little bit about how a CRA doesn't abate anything that came before it. TIF is the same. The difference is that when you have that increase in value, it's exempted, right? But the Village Council requires the owner and all the future owners to make payments in lieu of taxes equal in value to the amount of real property taxes that would have been paid but for the TIF. And so we're taking this increase, this chunk, and you can, it's basically the orange part there. You can see everything is, under it is not impacted because that came before. And then you can see the second green part on the right. When the TIF leaves, all the value just starts going to where it usually would have gone. But the orange part during that period of maximum period of 30 years in Ohio, the owner makes a payment, and they're not, usually if we didn't have a TIF, they would make a real property tax payment, and the Green County Auditor and Treasurer would send that bill to the property owner, and then the treasurer of the county will take the monies and send it to the village for their part, and the schools for their part, and the water district, and all the different taxing units. But with TIF, that money, the orange part, the increment, is instead paid the same way. They get a bill, the owner pays, goes to the auditor and treasurer, but they send it back to the village, and that will be held in a TIF fund that is administered by the Finance Director here at the village. The village can then use those pilot payments, that orange part, that, that increment, for public infrastructure improvements. So it's basically saying, look, we have to put in a sewer main, we have to widen the roads, we have to extend a road under our zoning code, or maybe, hey, we really want there to be a public park across the street. We want to help pay for that. The, it's, it's a deal where we're saying, we're going to take these monies, hold them here at the village, but we're going to use these things for public infrastructure improvements, and that's a defined term in the Ohio Revised Code.
So does the county give up their money?
They will. There are different types of TIFs. We'll get to that, but the one we're really focused on here is a commercial TIF. Apartments are, multifamily apartments are taxed at a commercial millage rate, so we have to use a commercial TIF. For that type of TIF, yes, the county millage on the increase, not anything before, only on the increase, would be, would be exempted, and then that will come here to the village. And that's the same with all the other taxing jurisdictions for a commercial TIF. Now, we did talk about, and I don't know if I have this listed here, is about what happens with the school district, because they would apply to the school district as well. But one of the things we can do easily under a commercial TIF scenario is just say, the Village Council has determined that the school district and any applicable joint vocational school district will continue to receive the millage that they would have received but for the TIF. So in that case, the treasurer, and you're special because you're a municipality, you can require the county treasurer to just send the payments to the schools in the amount of money that they would have received but for the exemption. So what happens is the village just ends up with less in that scenario, and you have less money to pay for public infrastructure improvements. But we see that many, many times where the community simply wants to make the schools unaffected from, from a TIF. That can be done. There's different types of TIFs. We're focused on the first one, the B TIF, the parcel TIF. What we can do is provide up to a 30-year, 100% incentive for commercial, multifamilies taxes, commercial, as we said, and that, that revenue is then used to benefit the parcels. So what does that mean? Benefit the parcels? You're going to get this revenue stream that's coming into the village. You can't just use it for anything. You can't take the money from the Windsor site, for example, and use it all the way across town for a park, you know, I know it's not that big, but three miles away or something like that. There has to be a reasonable nexus between the public infrastructure improvements and the benefit for the, the place from which you got the money. So that's a reasonable benefit. So a park across the street, a road that goes through, you know, things like that, those are all, those are all very good. Just, just different types of TIFs that you might encounter in the future for residential, for single-family homes. If you've owned property, you've, the city or the village has been in the chain title, there's just different things out there. So I don't want you to think that, you know, this is the only TIF that's out there, and this is all we can ever do, because it's not. And once again, you're not alone in your consideration of this type of program. Same map. I did make this one, too. Pretty proud of it as well. Not updated for 2025, though, but same thing. The yellow counties are higher in their usage of the program, whereas the purples aren't. Southwest Ohio is, you know, you can see there, it's, there's a lot of usage of the, of the programs. So you're not alone in that. We talked about this, public infrastructure improvements. It is a defined term, but it's a really broad term. So parks, stormwater, roadways, I would highlight roadways, and water and sewer. I would highlight that. Those are, those are big buckets, roadways, water and sewer. But the other words on there that you can't see because there's two, they're too tiny, it says including the continued maintenance of those things. So let's say, and this is deep in the weeds, but let's say, you know, we only needed a couple million dollars to do something, but the TIF's projected to generate more than that. Well, you could hold the rest of the money, and you will have it in the TIF fund, but 25 years from now, well, got to repave the road. You can do that, and because the authorization is there for the continued maintenance of water sewer lines and roads. So this could be a win, you know, for future generations, or, I mean, maybe I'll still, I'll still be here for sure, but, you know, to repave a road, that, you don't have to account for that. That's a capital improvement strategy that, that we're, we, we want the folks to do all across the state. capital improvement strategy that we're, we work with folks to do all across the state. Just with CRA, there's a reactive example, and there's a proactive example. So the proactive example is the one that we just talked about. That's, I think that's a capital improvement strategy. You could target certain areas and say, okay, this, as these prime for development, we're going to use the TIF program to make sure that, okay, over the next 10, 15, 20, 30 years, we have the resources available to maintain the capital improvements there that we need to maintain. I think that's the proactive take on the program. But the reactive take is, is the, we have a project in front of us, and that's kind of what we're here today, really. So how does, how does that work? We have a project and we want to use TIF for it. The other benefit is, maybe the community itself, maybe you need a road to be put through, a parcel or something like that, but the community doesn't have general fund dollars to go out and pay 600 grand to put the road through. Or maybe for a larger project example, maybe you just don't have the credit capacity, you don't want to issue bonds to do it alone. TIF is a way of resolving those tensions, to have the developer say, I will pay for the construction of the road, I will pay for the construction of the public infrastructure improvements for my project, because I have to have them, otherwise I can't go through zoning approval, I can't finish my project, so I will pay for it, be the developer. And then, so there's a couple ways we can handle that. Same scenario, the TIF funds flow to the village, but the village just enters into a mutual agreement with the developer that says, you agree to complete, construct, to good and workmanlike specifications, the public infrastructure improvements, you'll dedicate them to us, and then we will reimburse you out of the TIF revenue for the construction of those assets. So it's a way of getting, kind of having your cake and eating it too, really. We need this road completed, we don't necessarily want to pay for it ourselves, but we have a way of diverting certain increases in property tax revenue due to a project that we know is coming online to pay for those things. And that is just done via an agreement with the developer, we call it a TIF agreement, where the terms of that reimbursement are baked into the project. And all your standard contract language is embedded there, too. Default, if you don't do what you're supposed to do, then you don't get the money. But then again, if they don't build the asset, they also don't get the money. So that's just a way, I think that's a reactive example of how the program can be used.
So how, why do you describe it as the developers paying if they're getting reimbursed?
Because ordinarily, if we needed to put a sewer line through, or a road, and there wasn't a project, the village would have to do that. But in this case, we're saying, okay, you're going to do this project, but we're going to have you pay for it. But you're just going to get reimbursed out of your TIF dollars, if that makes sense.
Can I ask a related follow-up? So like, let's take like the Spring Meadows project, for example, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the deal at all, but they put in a bunch of new roads, a bunch of new sewer stuff. Did we pay for any of that? So in the, in a scenario where you could get the developer to pay for the things, you would just, in a TIF in that scenario, so let's say we TIF'd the Spring Meadows project, we would have just lost the revenue, right? So it's like, I'm just trying to lay out the range, the ideal scenario is that if there's a new road that needs to be built for a development, as I think we've always done in the past, then the developer pays for the road and the sewer and everything. A TIF, if you did it, would be a, you, the developer would benefit because they would, instead of paying taxes, they would pay for those improvements, and then the, in this case, the municipality would lose out on the revenue that would come in as a result of that project. I'm just trying to make sure I understand this correctly.
Yes, so was that for a residential?
Yeah.
I would say for, maybe, and not always the case, but maybe something for like that, it can be easier for them to recoup some of the costs that they lost, because they're selling off 50, 60, 70, 80 lots. In this case, you know, in a multifamily situation, you're just working off of an NOI, net operating income, and you're going to have to figure out how to pay yourself back over time with that. But that is correct. I mean, there are situations where a developer is completely comfortable with paying for those types of things. And in that case, though, I think I would say the village would, it would behoove itself to still use a TIF program. But in that case, maybe you're just not reimbursing the developer. That's, and that's this mutual thing that we dance around. Well, we want the project, maybe, if you want the project, but we want public infrastructure, and so we come to some sort of agreement. If the agreement is, oh, we're fine with building the public infrastructure, we'll pay for it all, great. But maybe, maybe they're not willing to do that. So you could use TIF to come in and say, okay, we'll reimburse you for some of these costs to do that, as a way of meeting somebody halfway, in the event that they're not willing to do that. It depends. But the other situation is, okay, let's say they are willing to totally build the public infrastructure improvements, the village could still process the TIF, it just wouldn't give any of the money out. You would keep it. And then, in 20 years, when that developer's gone, and it's only single-family homes with new owners and families, you could say, well, we don't need to raise taxes in the village because we have the money to pave the roads in this neighborhood all over again. Or we have, you know, we have money set aside from the TIF fund to build a playground across the street, or maintain the continual maintenance of the water and sewer lines. So it's a really good question. But again, I think it emphasizes that you're in the caper seat, because you get to think proactively about how you use this program. Whether you, and I think those are the three categories, just to go back, maybe you do have a developer that says, we're good, we'll pay for it all, we don't care, we're going to recoup our money on the sales price, that's fine. That's a business arrangement that you've come to with them. You could say, but we're still going to TIF it, we're just not going to give you any of the money. We'll keep the schools whole, we're not going to impact the school, but we're going to ride this wave. Because once the wave passes, you can't go back. Once the value increase happens, and you did, you decided, we don't want to TIF that, it's gone, you cannot go back. So at that point, you're just putting your strategic hat on, you're saying, okay, well they're going to pay for this, but they don't want to pay for that, but can we do something on our own that behooves us to? And then the third category is, it's a mixture of both, the developer's not willing to pay for those things, and so we need to come in and come to a mutualistic symbiotic agreement.
So Brian asked about the county, does this also include any other, any and all, so I guess I could see the benefit of municipality saying, all right, we're going to TIF it anyway, and then just get all the money, you know? And then you could make it, make somebody whole, but what about, you know?
The township.
The township, or the, you know, the health and human services levies, are, do all of those dollars then go to municipality?
Yes. And so it's, the ones you can cherry pick out are the schools. The ones you can, as a village council, you can cherry pick out, are the schools, and we can do that via the legislation. Having said that, there are some times where a community says, we really don't want the library to lose the money. You kind of walk a slippery slope with that, because you're saying, well, what about us? Or us, or us, you know, and that kind of, it kind of falls that way. But there are provisions wherein we can compensate, it's done by agreement. It's just done by an agreement, where you agree with the library or some other taxing jurisdiction to compensate them for, at a certain degree. The point is, though, the code says, if you enter in an agreement with one, and then the rest of them come, you have to give them the same. You don't have to give them the same, but if you want, if you enter in an agreement with the library at 50% of what they would have gotten, but then you say, oh, but we also want to give something to senior services, then you have to give them 50% if you want to do it, unless they consent. So it gets, we call that the most favored nation status provision, where there are some guardrails once you start going down that road. But some, a lot of communities do it, they, very many, they will say, we're comfortable with the policy choice, which is, the wave is here, we need to catch it, to preserve our capital improvement strategy, and things like that. And, you know, their point is, well, it's not exempting anything that the library already got, it's just exempting the increase on what would happen. But once the tip is up, once it's over, and you don't have to do a TIF for 30 years, you can do one for 15, you can do one for 10. Kind of to your question, Mr. President, which was, can we go under that? Yes. The parameters are here, but you can go under that, you can't go above it. So we see communities do that, too. There are a lot of ways to tailor the program to your needs, to your values and priorities.
So just to clarify on the levies thing, so you're saying, like, if we agreed to, say, you know, we'll give the library levy, you know, like 50% back, you're saying, like, any other levy, we'd have to do the same thing?
You wouldn't have to, but if you wanted to, you'd have to give them the same amount as you gave the first.
Same amount or the same percentage?
Percentage.
And you're saying schools are the only entity that can be cherry picked out?
Correct.
And this doesn't apply?
Yep.
Then can you maybe answer a question that came up in our growth meeting? So if, say, the, we have a school levy to pay for our new schools that are being built. If there are, say, 100, well, whatever, there's a new value that comes from a project, say, like the Windsor project. If the, if the dollars go, if the schools were made whole, if they did get those dollars in, does that lower everyone's amount they pay in because they're essentially trying to get to a total X amount of dollars, and therefore, there are more people paying in, and so everybody pays a little bit less to make it get there? Or does that mean that they just get more money on top of what they were going to get anyway?
It's a really good question. I might have to get back with you on that because of all the changes that are going on with the real property tax system in Columbus, with certain things, you know, with the 10 mil floor and other things. Could you ask your question, maybe ask it one more time, though?
Yeah, I think what I'm trying to, I'll try again, but just tell you, what I'm trying to understand is just, if we do this, does it mean that, if we do no TIF, do more developments mean lower costs for residents? Versus if we do a TIF, does it mean that there is an equal, like there is a, you know, a bar that was high, does the bar change? So if there's a new development, does that new taxation mean that, okay, we had to, we had to raise $50 million, I don't remember what the exact number is, but $50 million to pay for the school development, okay, now there's going to be five more million dollars in taxes that come in. If the village takes it, and therefore it doesn't go to, none of it goes to the schools, then we would all pay the same amount we paid before. But if the schools did get that portion, then does everybody pay a little bit less because they're just trying to reach that same dollar amount that we passed initially?
I don't think so, because the millage won't change based on what the schools and other taxing jurisdictions levy. There are some levies, though, where I do believe it is, it is a set amount, and we'd have to look at it, at the, you know, what we do in-house at Booker is, we look at the parcel, and we look at every single levy that's on that parcel. And then we can tell you specifically what's going to happen with those types of levies. Without knowing exactly what the levy detail is, I wouldn't want to say that for sure, because I think there are definitely some levies out there which are a stated value amount. But if those aren't a part of the village's, you know, if those are, the taxing jurisdictions aren't doing that, then no, I don't think so. Because the millage rate's not going to change.
And isn't, isn't there, I can't think of the phrase, it's, I think it's got the word adjustment in there somewhere, or even?
Reduction and rollback factors?
Yes.
Rollback factors, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's it. So even though property values increase, the amount of money stays the same based on whatever the original conditions and dollar amounts were?
Yeah, and there, every three years, there's a triennial update where the auditor goes through and updates the values, and then the sexennial is a reappraisal. I don't know what Green County's schedule is, but, yeah, that's correct. I mean, there are, reduction and rollback factors are a complicated formula, where the state basically publishes a formula, and then the county auditors apply it. And it protects residents from, or is intended to protect residents from paying increased property taxes solely based upon increases in values. But if there are, in the TIF area, the rollbacks are sent to the TIF fund. So they're included in our service payments that are paid. But I, I'm not, I don't think that, you know, as we talked about, I don't think that, if you did this for one project, or two projects, or a couple of projects, it's going to make a huge mathematical difference. But I think it's something that you strategically should think about, depending on what the levies are.
So one other question, from your experience, is there like a common thing that municipalities do between like keeping the money to like deal with maintenance versus like giving it all away, or like, you know, negotiating in between?
Right. I think that, you know, our counsel is that we provide what is necessary in that negotiation. But everything that's on top of that is intended to benefit the public and benefit the people of the village. And that's where your attorneys come in, and we negotiate that line, and we do that with your grace. But I think most often we see communities give what they have to, and they take the rest. And the other, the other thing is, I didn't mention, at the end of the TIF, if you have money remaining in the TIF fund, then the revenues transfer over to the general fund. So if you had $2 million sitting in the TIF fund at the end of 30 years, those funds will simply transfer over to the general fund, then you're free to use them how you want. They're not constrained by this public infrastructure benefit to the parcel test.
Thanks.
That was a good question, though, and I'm going to get back to you on that one.
So can I just ask?
It was a beautiful mind.
So can I, you made the, you asked the question about whether it would have an impact on lower taxes for villagers if an area was tipped. And so I'm wondering if folks use this tool, for example, the village only receives 12.3% of property taxes. So if we tipped?
You're going to get more than that.
Now receiving, yeah. And so then a percentage can be kicked back to the school district, which generally receives around, I don't know, 60%?
60%.
Right. So with the notion, I'm assuming that maybe there's some forecasted, we're not, we don't, we won't have to raise utility rates for some period of time because of this, like that that would be the benefit, as opposed to, you know, you're overall going to pay less in taxes over a period of time, because I thought your answer was, no, because your millages aren't going to change.
Yeah, I mean, there's, 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 you know, how do things net out in the wash? I mean, for example, you, if you don't TIF it, you're getting the 12 and a half percent, and you're comfortable with that, and that's all you're going to get. And if you let the moment pass, that's all you're going to, that's it. So the trade-off is, well, we left $1 million on the table. The trade-off is, well, the library's going to get that, and the other service, other services and taxing jurisdictions are going to get that, and that is good, and that's a good public priority. But the trade-off is, you will not have $1, $2 million to build a public park, to maintain a park, to redo the roads in an area, you'll have to find other sources of funds to do that, be it out of general revenue, or some other grant funding, you just, it won't be there. So you trade that off, and a lot of communities say, no, we're comfortable with, we want to use TIF to grab something bigger, we're going to make sure we get this wave. It could be for 10 years, it could be for 15, or it could be for the full 30. And we're just going to make sure that we take that money and we use it to benefit the public. So we have money now that we didn't have before, so we don't have to draw from general fund dollars to do the same thing. So, we don't have to draw from general fund dollars to do the same thing.
Have you ever seen where the TIF or the CRA affects grants or money given to you by county, state, to where they're like, oh, well, you got that TIF area and you've taken our tax dollars and you're holding them for 15 years and we're not giving you any more grants that we give you every once in a while?
I haven't seen that. I generally think that if, when, when these things are in place, I think that the, the different programs kind of work in concert with, with one another. If you've got enough money in a TIF fund and you could pay for an entire complicated project, maybe, but I see it on the flip side, a lot of projects are pretty darn expensive if you're going out and getting grant funds for it. I think this serves as a compliment. We have some funds, we've got skin in the game, give us your grant. I, I think I see more of that than I do the, the former.
But, if you only do a TIF area in one area, you've got to use that money in that one area.
Correct.
And if you've got another project on the other side of town that you want a grant for, they'll be like, well, you took our funds over here, we're not going to give you a grant to do the other side. I didn't know if you'd seen it.
I haven't seen that. It might spur people to say, we need different county commissioners. Maybe. I'm not here commenting on politics, but, you know, if that, you know, I think that counties understand that this is a tool that you can use. You don't need their approval for commercial TIFs--
Okay.
--multi-family. And they understand that it's there. And if they don't like that, they can go to the legislature and have it changed or you can have a terrible relationship with your county. I'm, once again, not commenting on--
We don't. I'm just, I will put it out there, we've got a good relationship.
Great relationship. Ben, I, I don't think that relationship would be impacted. They know you're doing this. Now, for residential TIF, single-family homes, you have to send a notice to the county and they have some play there. They can object to the TIF. They can approve the TIF. And there are some provisions with that type of TIF where they do get paid revenue. They can get paid 50% of the revenue that they would have got in the years 11, 30, 30 for their TIF. Commercial TIF's just not like that for multi-family, which is what we're kind of talking about. So, I think the counties kind of know that you can do this and I don't, it's, you, like we saw on the map, you ain't going to be the first ones either.
Correct.
The maps that you make.
Maps that I make. You've got to trust that they're right.
Excellent. Are we ready to continue with our high-level overview?
I don't think there were too many slides in here, but this was, you can't see it, but this is the modeling work that we do on the backend to show you, if you do this, here's what, this, here's what happens. Because we want people to make informed decisions, this is not this project. This is, this is just a, an example from, that I pulled that has nothing to do with us here. But, this is a 30-year TIF. We have, this is a big project. So, this is really for a single-family home development and we've got $65 million in value that's going in because they're building 200 single-family homes. So, it's a really big project. So, it's not the greatest example maybe, but I, I just wanted to show you that we, A, we do that to help make the decisions.
Well, it's honestly half of like, a project that we have going on right now, so it's not totally off. So, anyway.
Great. And, and what you see, we can send the presentation out, too, but the auditor will take a fee, the, the, the property tax formula runs, we take the value, we, we derive assessed value, which is 35% of the true value. And then, we apply the TIF to it. We get an amount of TIF revenue, which I wish I had a pointer or something, but that's kind of in the middle. The auditor takes a 1% fee usually, so they're paid for their services of running this thing.
Your pointer did work for a second. It goes away, but--
Yeah. So, that's, this is kind of where I am right here, but we allocated 100% back to the schools. So, we got about, I don't know, $950,000 for this TIF in year three and we gave almost half of that back to the school in that case and some back to the joint vocational school district. So, they were made whole, they weren't impacted. The, the auditor and the treasurer of the county just sent the money to them. They, they didn't have any effects from this. And the county, we were talking about that right here, this is for residential TIF, so they got some of the money back that they wanted. But, everyone was happy with that. I mean, that's just the mutual agreement that all the parties came to and what we ended up with in this green column is the yearly TIF revenue. So, they were getting about a quarter million, a little bit over a quarter million dollars in TIF revenue every year from, from that project. And so, we end up with about $8 million in just true dollars of, of TIF revenue that was used for public infrastructure improvements. You do get that money over time, though. So, we do live in an inflationary environment. And, so, we show you here 8 million, but if we, we also do a present value discount analysis, so you can understand how much money that is in today's money. So, 8 million was 3.4 million in today's dollars. It's just showing you, if I took 3.4 million dollars and I invested it on my own at cash rates at 6%, here's what I would have had. So, it helps you make a trade-off analysis, but--
And can you, is it on there? What, so what would be the, the comparison to what you would get if you did nothing?
That is not on here. But, if we were running the same kind of example, you would have gotten 12.5% of the 8 million instead of 8. You would have gotten, somebody's math major--
1.5 million?
Yeah. Better than me.
Yeah.
But, that's the difference, that's the trade-off. You just wouldn't have 6 million over time to put back into public infrastructure or something. You'd have to draw that from somewhere else.
And just to clarify, I'm sorry, what I said, I, because I think I said it the opposite, but, you know, our Spring Meadows program, project is 90 homes and so, it's roughly half of this. And so, yeah, that's very interesting.
So, then, of the, the difference between the 8 million and the 1 and 1/2 million rough numbers, that other 6 and 1/2 million, it would, that's money that would have gone to the other taxing entities?
That's correct.
The senior services, the library, et cetera, because in this example, the schools were made whole?
That's right.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yep. You're just making a policy determination that, look, we've got massive or, or important strategic public infrastructure improvements that we want to pay for and this is how we're going to do it instead of using our, our general fund dollars or other monies.
Well, the other thing is, ultimately, those other taxing entities are going to get more money--
That's correct.
--at some point that they wouldn't have gotten otherwise.
That's a fantastic point. So, if we don't have a project, the project doesn't move forward, they're not getting anything. Nobody's getting anything. So, when the TIF expires, everyone benefits from the project because everybody's getting their revenue as they would have, just like normal. And so, that's the dance we're doing. They want to build a project, we want the project, everybody wants to be better off in the end and so, we're going to come to some sort of a mutual symbiotic relationship about how to do that. Great point. When this stuff expires, everybody benefits. All boats are lifted from that.
Would you agree it's fair to say to take that sort of one step further that, the question, the main question is, would the project happen otherwise? Meaning like, so take the Spring Meadows, we could safely assume, given that it happened without any of this, that it was going to happen anyway? Right? So, everybody was going to benefit. The big, the big use, and it was interesting, I was, I was glad you answered one of my questions before that was, I had out of the memo, you know, this idea of like, are these terms closely defined? Because there's some of them where you're like, I don't, can we really argue that much of Yellow Springs is in like, a, you know, essentially in need? So, the, the question is, is can you, are you incentivizing a project to happen that wouldn't happen otherwise? If you aren't, then there's, the main benefit is just for the municipality essentially. If you are, then it's truly would be a benefit to everybody involved because they didn't have any of that benefit later. Is that, does that sound like a fair summary?
I do. The only, only caveat I would add is, well, a project could go forward without any of this, but you don't get affordable housing. So, if you're giving something that you can live with, it's consonant with your values, you can get something back that you really also want to. That won't happen if you don't play the game a little bit.
Well, it doesn't have to happen. I mean, we've been, we've been playing the game to some degree and we've got it, we had that happen with Spring Meadows. I just keep using, it's an easy example where we're negotiated to get to things like the sewer pump that we wouldn't have got otherwise. So, it's, there's a, you're more likely to get the things if you play the game, but you, you could maybe get them anyway, depending on--
Maybe you could. But, there are definitely some projects out there and some folks who don't care and they will let your properties sit and won't develop at all.
It helped in this case to have a gracious builder.
Yes.
So, that we did get a lot.
You're talking about Windsor?
No, I'm not talking about Windsor.
Springs or--
I'm literally not talking about--
Okay, well, I mean, we didn't get any affordable housing, but yeah.
Well, we got a lot.
So, you're talking about not Windsor? Talking about Spring Meadows still?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll say the reason why this ma, why this one here in the first 10 years for a county is, it's going to take about 10 years to start really collecting and having everything built. So, the county's really waving everything for the first 10 years, project built out, bam, you start paying county taxes again.
Yeah, and we, we do have many counties that they say, no, it's okay, you're good, go ahead, we're fine. Take the revenue, invest it in your community, it's all of us. Because then, they don't have to do it.
The TIF model also allows you to make sure that there's funds to take care of that in the future because those funds cannot be used on the other side of town. They're dedicated to that area, so you have long-term funds that are supporting the infrastructure in that area.
Yeah, and I, it's, it, you know, we talked about CRA, well, we could do the, we could, we're designing this program. TIF is not really like that. TIF is a project-by-project, specific-by-specific tool that you can use for each, each project. And you don't need the consent of the proj-- It's great when they, they, maybe they say, yeah, we're fine with that, you can go ahead and do a TIF, but you don't need them to consent to it necessarily. So, you're, you're, you're doing exactly that, that you're evaluating each program for each project.
How is the area defined? Like, we're talking about the money also stay in that area, right? How is the, how does the area become defined through this process?
Well, we will, for, for the B-TIF that we're kind of talking about with respect to the multifamily project in Windsor, it is parcel by parcel. And we will specifically list the parcels in the ordinance that village council would consider.
W word.
And then, any parcels that are cut up or chopped up after that are just included in that. But, it's on a parcel-by-parcel basis for, for TIF.
So, in your--
We'll put a map at there.
Sorry. In your experience, is there ever a needs assessment that is done for these other entities to determine like, what, you know, our library, let's say, the roof's going to fall in, right? And they need to have that completed. Is that done so that that's taken into consideration when you're looking at, you know, this 10, 15, or 30-year period?
I've never seen that. Usually, I would say that those kinds of things are just determined based on your relationship with the other entity. I, I have never, in my time doing it, I've never seen somebody come up with a needs assessment to look at all the different jurisdictions and how they might be impacted. So, I would, I would say no. But, if you know those things and those are very important to you, then, you could absolutely consider them if you wanted to.
It's hard not to think about them, right? I mean, when the Green County Development Municipalities came to the meeting on Monday and said they're asking for renewal, if somebody interacts with them a lot, I'm like, when are you going to ask for more? Because they've been literally having a renewal for 40 years? I mean, they haven't, and it's--
It wouldn't get passed otherwise, probably, but--
That's certainly what, I mean, that's, that has been their bet.
Right.
But, they've been shrinking services because, anyway. So, it's a, there's a line somewhere.
There is.
Yeah.
And the only other thing is, I guess, just on the Spring Meadows thing, I mean, yes, we have benefited in some ways, but, I mean, we're talking about something very different. I mean, mostly, I think what we, what Spring Meadows, the developers have done, has been about making sure that project can happen. I mean, I know there are some aspects of like, facilitating, extending, but, I don't know. I just don't want to like, leave that point like, out there that, yeah, this, this would, this would be huge, I think, from everything I'm hearing. So, anyway. And maybe we just need to, it's not the focus of this meeting, but maybe we need to clarify that in the future because I'm not feeling like we're getting a lot beyond just making sure that that development can happen, so. But, maybe I'm wrong. Sorry. I just didn't want to leave that out there.
Well, that was really it for me. We covered kind of everything through the presentation, but if there are any questions as we go forward, happy to help out. And I'm definitely going to go back to the drawing board on my answer to the Vice President's question, though, I guess. Want to make sure we get that one right, so.
So, I do have a question really quickly, following up about CRAs. What kinds of municipalities or what do you see, like municipalities with like, heavily historical districts or like, some, you know, like, obviously, Columbus is huge, but when you lay the CRA over the whole, over the whole municipality, what kind of municipalities are you seeing? What kind of places are you seeing that are similar in our size that are doing the, the whole town?
West, the Village of West Milton--
Okay.
--is not far from here. That's in Miami County. We just helped them. It's public. I mean, they passed their ordinance to, to designate the entire village as under their CRA program. That's an example of a smaller community.
Did they do a TIF, too?
They, they are using TIF on a number of, of programs and projects. And they use, there are other, there are other programs out there, too. These are ones that we're looking at, TIF and CRA. There's other programs out there as well.
Right. And so, with the CRA, I want to kind of get more specific. Are we talking about, you know, does it benefit, you know, like Gavin said something about, you know, the village being in need? But, if we have infrastructure, if we have some historical buildings that we're thinking of reconfiguring, you know, does it fall into that? We don't necessarily have to be like, in need. Does that make sense?
Right. I mean--
Like, does it have to be because of, because of like, you think about different, different sections than like, the city of Dayton, for example?
Yeah. I mean, you're welcome to, I, I, once again, there, there is a test in the revised code and it says, where these types of remodeling or new construction, it has been discouraged. And so, we make that, we, we draw a report and we say, okay, this is, this is, this is what we see. And then, you pass a, a resolution based off of that recommendation. But, if, for example, let's say, the, in a community, there is a really well-off area that obviously, this doesn't work. This is a completely wonderful neighborhood and, you know, values are sky-high, you could just exempt that portion out of it. And we see that. We do see that.
So, do people use it for their business corridors? Like, this is West Milton?
Yes, sometimes they do. West Milton's the whole thing. West Milton just said, look, we know we're going to have larger-scale development, we don't want to keep coming back, we're just doing it. And that's what we've decided to do. Other communities, to your point, say, okay, we want to use this in a more tailored way where we're not going to, we're not going to allow exemptions for this portion of our community--
Okay.
--because they don't need it. We've determined that we don't want to authorize that there. And even grander than that, you could cut off an area and say, none here, sorry. But, then, in this other area where you've designated it, you can say, but we will encourage this type of development here. We won't encourage, we want remodeling only or we want new construction only. You can pick and choose those types of things. But, I think it's a great point because that's from your strategic plan, from your strategic priorities, you're saying, okay, we're going to use this program and we're going to use it this way and we're going to broadcast the market signals out to say, do this here, rehab this house, build a new house here. My friends, they just bought a house, they bought an empty lot in Cleveland, in Ohio, in Ohio City. And there's a CRA program there, so they bought an empty lot, built a house on it and they got a real property tax exemption for 15 years. In exchange, they built the house. In year 16, the, everybody will benefit because that new house is there where there was none.
So, a follow-up question, sorry Gavin. Why wouldn't Yellow Spring-- Why wouldn't Yellow Springs, so I hear some reasons why other, you know, bigger municipalities wouldn't overlay, you know, the entire municipality with CRA or TIF? Why wouldn't we do that?
Because you've determined that there's a specific area in your community that you don't want to offer an incentive.
But we can decide whether we actually, like, give it, right? I mean, in the end. So I mean, it would be like, the risk that the elected body might change and do things, or, I mean, something like that, or...
Well, there are some differences, and we didn't go too deeply into that, but, for example, with the residential program, if you're just doing a one-house, they don't have to enter into an agreement with the village. That's done by application, and the village designates a housing officer here as village staff. That person then submits, the property owner submits an application to the housing officer, and as long as that person meets the requirements, they get the exemption. So you don't necessarily have total control over, village council has to approve every single abatement.
Okay.
For commercial, we, you have to enter into an agreement with the village prior to commencement of construction. So you have very much control over commercial abatements in that area that you drew.
Designated, okay.
You don't necessarily have as much control for residential. I'll say this, though, it used to be, five years ago, where for multifamily, you, you have the power for multifamily. You can call that residential, or you can call it commercial. And there's, we went through some of the parameters for that, like I just said, residential, you didn't have control over it, because there wasn't an agreement. Commercial, you did. Nowadays, didn't happen five years ago, but we, we can write into the ordinance from the village, establishing the area. If you're going to build multifamily, you have to enter into an agreement. If you're going to build single-family homes at this price point, you have to enter into an agreement. If you're going to bring single-family homes below this price point, you can't get the abatement. So we can put the screws in there to give you that authority to kind of gatekeep. But there are some limits to that, and you wouldn't want to. I mean, you wouldn't want to, if a person out there buys a lot and they do a rehab of a home, you know, they're not going to come before you and get an agreement and get an attorney, I mean, and I don't even know if that's fair, because, you know, some of the bigger companies are, do they have the resources to do that? And maybe your mom and pop don't. But, great question, that, those are some of the reasons why.
Okay. Thanks.
So, isn't that, should we talk, can we ask questions about the Unity Village project specifically? Is that, is now the, I just, I guess, maybe could just share a little bit about, and I don't know if this is, who, whoever answers, what is the timeline, or how would the process work on this? So, when would, when would we see, you know, a chart like the one that you made hypothetically for this project? Or when would we talk about the, you know, the range of options of the 30-year to the less, to the commercial, you know? Howard, is there an idea of how that would happen?
Well, I think, I think the first thing is to decide, is village council okay with having a CRA program in our community? Because if you're not okay with it, then we're not going to have that a part of the Unity Village discussion. As of right now, they have requested a 15-year, 75% CRA on the multifamily. And we would like to layer in a TIF on top of that, so that there are some public infrastructure improvements associated with the project, such as the extension of a street, that I believe have to be done to meet certain zoning parameters. And the village, I don't believe, wants to pay for that. And so we're using a TIF to have someone else pay for it. And so they've, we've thought about having a 100% 30-year TIF layered up into the 15-year 75% CRA. That's what has been requested at this point. It's not a 100% CRA, so it's a 75% CRA. It's not the maximum, as we, we discussed. There also won't have to be school district approval, because you don't need school district approval if you're at 75% or under.
But you said 100% for the TIF.
Yes.
We don't need school approval for that?
We won't, because you're going to make the school, well, if you chose to, you would make the schools whole. When you make the schools whole as a municipality, you do not need school district approval to approve.
Okay. What's the timeline on, so, I mean, I mean, the first thing we'd have to do is establish the CRA and TIF, and decide whether we're going to, what area we're going to cover.
Right.
What's the timeline on doing that?
Yeah, so the housing study takes about two to three weeks, and after the housing study is complete, you review, there's one piece of legislation that comes before you. It's that CRA establishing ordinance, where we just, we overlay the boundaries, we describe the requirements and parameters, and the different types of exemptions that you want to include or not. That can take your normal council reading process, I don't know, they usually use two or two readings. After that, we certify the area and a map to the Ohio Department of Development. That can take between two to three weeks, and you're ready to start authorizing abatements when you get a unique number from them. And that process end-to-end, maybe two months to do the CRA, that's the first leg of it. So the second leg of the CRA would be, okay, now we're accepting applications, that's the second part. But I would, it's kind of two issues, right? And that's why I started there, we only got to half of your question, which was, the first part is, do we want to have a CRA area in our community? That's what we just described, that's the process, that's probably two months for that. After you've set it up, okay, now we're dealing with the specific project at hand. We, we want to, if you want to call multifamily residential, but you still want to require an agreement, we can do that. What would happen in that case is, there would be an agreement that's drawn up between the village and Windsor, and that agreement is also attached to a resolution that you would consider approving or authorizing village staff to execute it. So that would go through your normal two-reading process as well. I'd say there's more negotiation on that front end to do that. And then there's an agreement that comes to you. You can do that, like I said, via your normal process. And then that's kind of it on the authorization portion for the CRA program. TIF is also simpler. TIF is simpler, because it's the B-TIF, it's the commercial TIF, you don't have discretion to choose, it's taxed commercially for TIF purposes. So with that one, what we do, if you went with a non-school option, we'd send a 14-day notice to the schools, that includes the Joint Vacationals School District, we send a 14-day notice to them. And that just says, we are thinking about doing this. After that, we just have one ordinance, a TIF ordinance, which would, again, just run through your normal process. We have 15 days to send it to the state. And that's kind of it from the authorization perspective. On the TIF side, one more thing to do, we have to submit an application to the state tax commissioner at the appropriate time under your ordinance. That basically runs through the state, the state will give a form back to the Green County Auditor, and then the Green County Auditor knows, I need to put this on the TIF rolls, and then the process kind of goes from there. But that's the whole process for the, this, this public financing, public, public financing portion of what we're talking about. With the TIF stuff, you know, there might be a reimbursement, a TIF agreement with the developer, to take some of the TIF revenue, some of it, and give that back to the developer for the construction of what you want in public infrastructure improvements. That would just be wrapped up into the TIF ordinance also. For this project, we've talked about, it probably would be good at the very, very front end to have a development agreement. And a development agreement says, well, we're just going to back up, we're going to take a high level, and we're going to agree to the things that we're going to do. We agree that you're going to build this, and you're going to build this project, you're going to build it by a certain date, and in exchange, we agree as a village to consider the CRA program for this project at this level. It just sort of sets the table and the terms, so that we have this agreement in place, and then we're good, we can roll, we can pass things through regular order, if that makes sense.
So, I think these two things can happen in parallel, but it sounds to me like, probably two to three months to get our TIF and CRA in place, if we want those in the toolbox. And then, I know there's all the other work that needs to be done around, like, what does it look like for the Windsor project? And, you know, I think we need to separate those two things, in my mind. So, I guess what I'm interested in is teeing up the discussion for TIF and CRA as soon as possible, our next meeting, and starting to move through that and decide, like, do we have the will to do that? Do we want to put that, like, you know, in our toolbox? And then, there's specific work to be done about what makes sense for this particular project that's, you know, in the hopper, I think. So anyway. So, yeah.
And just, this is a really technical sort of a question, but is it possible to certify the area before the ordinance is in effect?
From the state's perspective, no. We'd need to...
So you have to wait out the 30-day...
Create, right. We'd have to create the CRA area, you know, to take a high level, I think, you know, first, you have this discussion about, okay, we want to have CRA, or we don't want to have CRA. Second, okay, once you get that kind of rolling, now we're talking about the specific project at hand. And at that point, we're talking about the things we want to offer, the things we don't want to offer. When we've nailed that down, we negotiated development agreement with the entity, and after that, we've agreed on what we've agreed on, and we're going to roll the TIF and the CRA through the normal processes. But I agree, probably two to three months, maybe a little longer, it just depends on what, you know, how fast that negotiation percolates.
Do we need to have, like, for the housing surveys, that's one of the first things, do we need to have clarity on what to study? Does it have to be like a small neighborhood, or can you do like the whole village? And is that something that you guys do, would be thank you for that?
We do the housing surveys. We're pretty efficient at doing them, because we've done quite a few. We would need to know the general area that you'd want to focus the CRA program on, we will need, because we'll need to pick the structures there to look at. And it's not, we, we need to have structures there, but also, remember, we're also looking at where new development has been discouraged. So that could be a field, or that could be a parcel that doesn't have anything going on at this point. So, and I would also say, it's not meant to say, it is not meant to say, your neighborhood is not worthy, or something of that nature. That's not what's going on. It's just to say that, for a myriad of reasons, which could be many systemic causes, the private marketplace is simply not building something here, you know, it's, it's, it's not occurring. So, that's, you're not making a blight determination, or something of that nature.
Well, I've been thinking, it seems really perfect for, like, the Antioch surrounding area, or area of vacant areas that they are selling off. I mean, but is that, what do you, what's your take on that? I mean, evaluating that area, although we don't always know for sure what pieces they're going to be selling off, that's the hard, hard part. My thought is, then let's be proactive in that area, and they're going to continue to sell off properties, and prepare ourselves for not being, just have, experiencing full disinvestment in the community in advance.
Well, the other thing we can do is, you know, let's say you say, we do, we know we want to, we want to put this here, and this is the area we want to focus on. Things change, so maybe we did draw it too big, you can come back and amend it and exclude parts out of it. Maybe we drew it too small, you can come back and expand it, just like the village of West Milton did. They had it at a certain parameters, but they just expanded it to the whole village. So, I, you know, I, I said, you're in the catbird seat, I guess I put a lot of pressure on everybody, because, you know, you have these choices to make. But don't feel afraid, because you can come back over time and go bigger or smaller, and things like that.
Can I ask, I think I remember you saying this at the beginning, I want to clarify. This could also be used if a property was bought for a large remodel, correct?
Yes.
So, I don't want to just, just have it at the Antioch, because I'm, I'm thinking big picture. You know, we have aging buildings, we have the CBE, we have other areas in town, so I want to broaden it, and if we need to restrict it, let's restrict it later, but let's not, because what happens if we do one area, and then all of a sudden we have something fall apart?
Precisely.
And then it's too late, because it's not there. So if we see this is too big, we can restrict it. But as long as it can be used for remodels and things like that as well, I mean, that opens the gate to a lot of different things that we can do, and we can help control, and we can...
Again, like...
Put our values into what's being done.
Have it in the toolbox, like, I don't know. So I, when we had our growth work section, you know, I said, why not just start with what West Milton did? Overlay the entire village, and then see what happens. And to me, that's a separate thing, because, I mean, that's, I mean, that's just, yeah, we have that, like, option, you know, versus, it's, it's going to be a lot more difficult to figure out what we're going to do with Windsor or other projects. But I, I think it makes sense to get that started, so. And, I mean, you kind of mentioned that, well, I'll say it a different way. In the past, you know, when we have not finished something, and then, you know, it's an election cycle, and we have to restart, it can be very difficult. So, you know, I guess, that's also why I'm thinking about timeline, let's...
There's no, there's no reason why this should take any longer than...
No, I know.
Than the time, than the start of time, or, and even a little bit shorter.
As long as we get it started.
We have an idea of what, I mean, this is, this says what Windsor would request, and what Windsor would like to see happen. So for already, we lay the CRA over the whole thing, and then deal with the, that TIF, I mean, it's, because a TIF, TIF is very specific, I mean, they're both very, very specific.
No, we can overlay the TIF, too. Right, I mean, they're both...
I mean, sure. And also, I, well, very specific, project-by-project, right?
But we can still, like, set it up that it's an option for the entire village, right?
You can always use TIF.
Okay.
You can only use CRA within a specific area.
So what I was saying is that we know what Windsor, what Windsor has requested. And it seems reasonable, and it's something that we, that we should be, like Meg said, proactive with, I mean, not just the Windsor thing, but with the entire thing. I don't, I don't, I don't honestly see any reason why we wouldn't do this.
Right.
Especially given, you know, kind of the downtown area, we have some aging infrastructure, aging buildings, historically, it's, you know, historically kind of relevant structures.
Well, and again, just to clarify, since we're looking at Unity Village, that why wouldn't we have this option, like, overall for the village, right?
Yeah, I think, I think that...
Because we're not, we're not deciding about this yet.
I think that we're up here echoing sentiments, Brian, is what I think.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure we know what we're talking about. I want to make sure everyone's understanding, we're not making any decisions about Windsor. We're talking about just, you know, having this tool, so.
And we've got to have the tool to be able to offer it.
That's right, yeah. And that's why it's sort of bundled up, is because we don't have a program, so.
Yep.
In Dayton, for example, when a developer comes, we're not having the discussion about where we're going to draw our CRA, and what it's going to look like, and where we know those, those inputs, so.
So then what does that look like in terms of process, I guess, right?
We're in a work session right now at your next regular meeting, we could...
Have a discussion.
We have the discussion, do you want some type of, I mean, do we want a resolution authorizing the housing survey?
We have, for me, like, we always have a discussion before we bring any legislation. So we have not had a discussion at a, at a council meeting yet.
Okay.
So that needs to happen next.
So there'll be a conversation at the next meeting, a discussion about really initiating the process of establishing a CRA. And then if that, if council's will is to move forward with that, then we'll bring, well, that'll set it in motion, right? We'll need to do the housing survey.
Yeah, so we can't start the housing survey until we have that, right? So we'll have to be prepared to start it right away, I guess, then after the next council meeting?
But Booker will be doing the housing survey.
Yes.
I'm sure I'll be...
Right, no, you're correct.
Yeah, you'll, we'll have to get some general direction.
Because I think you just got, I just think you've got a new title on your, the housing...
Yeah, what's her new title?
Housing, housing officer.
Officer. She got a badge. She get a badge? And then that way Judy can never remember it.
Takes me at least four months.
And then at some point, I think it would be useful for council to tackle the question of Windsor and what, you know, whether, really just to give, I, I think all of us the guidance as to how to move forward with them, the authority to negotiate a development agreement to bring back for your consideration, maybe within the confines of something that, some of what you've seen here would probably be helpful soon.
And then the TIF piece too, right? I mean, you just said the CRA, the TIF-
Since TIF is project by project, whatever you're authorizing the manager to go off and, and negotiate, that would include, you know, both their request about TIF and CRA.
So I guess the, then at that, that conversation is the place where we would talk about maybe what some of those priorities are, like what some of those, because I guess the, I can totally see the value for our priorities. Like, in this case, the Windsor project, the question on the table is, is we haven't seen apartment developments for a long time and it feels like we really need apartments. That feels like it's a clear sort of priority area, using the Spring Meadows as the example, just to have something concrete. I don't think that there's been like a, we really need more of this particular kind of single-family housing. At the growth discussion, at least, Brian, I'm looking, you in this case, you were sort of like, I don't wanna do anything with single-family housing. So then there's been, there's been different ideas about it, but if we have, I think there's pretty clearly a higher priority on apartments and then even more so on affordable apartments than there are on other areas of potential development. So the, I guess the only sort of downside for me of a broad CRA is that you're essentially saying, hey, we would, we are open to lowering the bar across the board. When in the past, we've been, I guess we just haven't said that and so we're negotiating with people starting from that position.
But what I, what I heard is that it's not necessarily lowering the bar because we get to determine what the bar is. We get to set, what kind of things do we want to see in this particular area? And that's a, that's a part of it. You know, if you're gonna, and, you know, we, we get, we get to, we get to set the bar. So it's not like, here, we have the CRA, we've lowered the bar, now you can just come and do what you want, because we get to decide that.
Yeah, and that's why I was saying, I'm looking forward to talking about the, what are some of the priorities so that, so that we're sending a signal that's, that isn't saying we're lowering the bar, that we're saying, hey, we're actually, we have particular ideas that we wanna do. We don't wanna lower the-
Absolutely, and we, it's imperative that we do that, we have to do that.
Sequentially, like the, is the development agreement the same as the PD agreement? And is that, our code requires a PD agreement.
When I say development agreement, think term sheet. We just wanna have the stuff together that we're, the CRA, you're gonna, you're gonna think about the housing survey, we're gonna, we're gonna take a crack at that, we're gonna work with village staff to take a first crack at the ordinance that sets the bar, that has all those parameters in it. And then we'll discuss and discuss and iterate and iterate and iterate. That's on that track concurrently with that. Okay, we've moved forward with the CRA, we're probably gonna do this. Now we're gonna draft a term sheet between the village and the developer that says, we agree under the CRA, we can offer this because we're gonna move forward with our establishing the CRA. We also agree, we're gonna do a 30-year TIF at 100%, non-school, keep the schools whole with the TIF. And then we will agree also to, you're gonna build A, B, C, D, and E and we'll give you this amount of money, no more than that. We can cap the money, you get 1.5 million, that's it. And, and those things are just boiled into a term sheet so that when we push go on, we're gonna authorize the TIF now, we're gonna authorize the second part of the CRA, which is the agreement, all that good stuff. It's just, we're, we're all agreed on what we're doing here and, yeah. And for your first big development like this, I think a development agreement term sheet is not a bad concept.
And so to answer your question, Meg, we could have to do two separate documents.
Okay.
Great. So, yeah, we talked about, you said 6:30. I mean, I think this has been a great discussion and, yeah, really moving us forward, so, yeah.
I, I think we need to also, when we're do the resolution to move forward, then we should also set a timeline for council and staff to be able to give Windsor an answer.
Right.
Because it's not fair for them to be in limbo, still trying to work on a project and still trying to figure out all the, if we're not giving them a clear path, so.
Well, and that's why I kinda mentioned, like, we need to wrap this up by the end of the year.
I agree.
So.
Looks like you're gonna go to- 6:30.
Well, thanks for, for having us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll be here to help every step of the way and we look forward to it.
Okay.
Thanks for answering all of our questions.
I'm a problem.
I know, that's why you're here, of course. Well, we're really here because of John Bryant.
I think it was kind of a firing line, so I think-
And there's terries and flowers still out.
Your symbiosis.
I guess I'm being told that I have to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Does Kevin not have to be here for that?
I guess not.
Poor kid.
Yeah, okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, thanks everyone.
I sent him home.